All right, good afternoon, everybody. We are convening the House Committee on Higher Education. Today is Friday, January 31st. It is 2:15 PM and we're here in Conference Room 309. Before we begin the hearing today, just wanted to say to the committee, thank you, Vice Chair Amato, for serving in this capacity. Just wanted to convey what an honor and privilege it is to serve in this capacity. I want to thank the members who I'm sure are listening on YouTube and not trying to punk me by not being here today. I appreciated the one-on-ones that we had to talk about, what we can do collectively to uplift and support all the post-secondary institutions in our state. This is my first time being a chair, so I'm going to ask everyone for their patience in advance. But I just did want to mention three things that I intend to follow in terms of how we manage this committee. So number one, even though the House rules stipulate that hearing notices have to be filed no later than 48 hours, we are going to intend to, we do intend to file all of our notices with at least 72 hours' notices. There are times where we have kind of a crunch in the legislative calendar, but again, to the extent possible, we'll be giving 72-hour notices for our hearings. Number two, the House rules dictate that we release all of the received testimony by no later than two hours before the hearing. Our committee will release them by 5:00 PM the day before, which works out to about 21 hours, I believe. And then lastly, if we have any bills that require substantive changes in terms of the HT1, my intention is to defer that bill to the next scheduled hearing, and I will circulate a soft copy of the proposed amendments, so you're not voting on anything blind in committee. Members with that, any questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for your commitment to transparency, Chair. I'm looking forward to serving with you. Thank you.
The feeling is mutual. Thank you, Vice Chair. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. So we have six bills on our agenda today. First up is House Bill 223 relating to pharmacy. This bill establishes the Daniel K. Inouye College of Pharmacy Special Fund to support pharmacists' workforce assessment and planning efforts. It establishes a pharmacist's workforce assessment fee and appropriates funds. Up first, we have the Board of Pharmacy, Christopher Fernandez, providing comments.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Christopher Fernandez, Executive Officer with the PVL. I'm here to stand on the board's testimony that's offering comments from, sorry, from previous bills. If you have any questions, we'll be available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, in person, we have Corey Sanders with the Hawaii Pharmacists Association, likewise providing comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I want to lean into two aspects of my testimony with what really the Center for Pharmacy will be used for. Number one is to collect workforce data in the state. Right now, we have really minimal data on where pharmacists can be the biggest impact to improve access and quality of care, and also really serving as a voice of the profession at large. So outside of the university, our Board of Pharmacy is all volunteer, the State Association is all volunteer. We're asking for similar treatment that medicine and nursing have, to really have an active role during business hours with what pharmacists and pharmacy technicians can do to improve care. I will say, I do think this is the missing piece for our profession. We are considered a pretty unprogressive state to practice pharmacy in, and with something like a Center for Pharmacy, I do feel like we can really propel ourselves forward in a lot of team-based care models. I will say, I noted this morning the comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. This is really anticipated to be a self-sustaining center. Similar to the Center for Nursing, they only have three positions allocated in statute, but they have nine positions now with additional access to funding. And then I also noted some of the testimony from the Board of Pharmacy. They're looking for additional oversight. We'll work with them during their next meeting to conclude whether that's a board or provisions and updates to the legislature on the Board of Pharmacy. We're happy to do whatever they would like in terms of oversight. So I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next via Zoom, we have Chancellor and Dean Ray Matsumoto of the UH Hilo College of Pharmacy.
Good afternoon.
Testifying in support.
I stand in our written testimony, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Up next, also via Zoom, Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, providing comments.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair. This is Jay McMillan on behalf of Tom Yamachika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We have submitted comments as well on the measure we'll stand on our written comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Also via Zoom, we have Kimberly Mikami of Molokai Drugs Incorporated, providing testimony and support.
Actually, I was able to fly in.
Oh, awesome.
I flew in Wednesday night, a mystic storm.
Well, thank you for joining us in person.
Chairman Takuya Garrett, Vice Chairwoman Amato, and members of the House Higher Education Committee, as a rural healthcare provider, access to comprehensive, high-quality healthcare services is our mission at Molokai Drugs. On behalf of our employees and patients, I am testifying in favor of HB 223, which proposes the establishment of a Center for Pharmacy in Hawaii. For the past 16-plus years, Molokai Drugs has supported the Daniel K. Inouye UH College of Pharmacy in Hilo by being an intern preceptor site. We do this to help grow the profession and hope that we can also grow our own. One of the biggest reasons Molokai students do not attend pharmacy school is the pure expense of four years of off-island tuition, books, fees, et cetera, which is now approximately $107,800 per pharmacy dean Ray Matsumoto. This number does not include room and board. One of the proposed roles of the new center will also include coordinating pharmacy student loan repayment programs by working in rural and/or underserved areas like Molokai. By having a center helping with pharmacy school student loan repayment, we will find more Molokaians going into the pharmacy profession. It's not in my testimony, but right now, we have a full-time employee who works 40 hours a week, and she is taking four classes at night. She normally stays up till 1:00 in the morning to take all of her pre-pharmacy classes so she can apply for pharmacy school next year. Molokai Drugs has also been a training work site for nationally-certified pharmacy technician training. We recently worked with Good Jobs Hawaii, a partnership with the State of Hawaii and University of Hawaii Community Colleges, to help people in Hawaii attain a good-quality job for generations to come. Molokai Drugs is also partnering with DKICP and the University of Hawaii Maui College with expanded certified pharmacy technician development, which includes immunization training. This new center will also help implement retention initiatives for pharmacists and pharmacy technicians, which has always been a concern of rural healthcare facilities like ours, so that a portion of the fees for licensure may be, may be secure to support a director similar to doctors and nurses centers in Hawaii. Molokai Drugs is on board for paying additional fees for our pharmacists and our pharmacy technicians. Thank you for your consideration and vote for HB 223.
Thank you very much, especially coming in from Molokai.
I am one of those people that was stranded two weeks ago, and I had to take a boat from Hei Pier to Molokai. I was on a boat for almost four hours, and altogether, it took a little over five hours for me to go from town to take an Uber to Kani Ohe to get on the boat to Molokai and then get a ride to the airport. And one of the reasons why this is off my written testimony, one of the reasons why this center is so important, we are seeing as an island providers leaving left and right. And we are seeing our Molokai born-and-bred folks not coming home after they've finished their medical schooling and nurses. We right now have three doctors, born and raised in Molokai, practicing in Texas. We right now, as of last August, we have two Molokai girls in medical school. We have a third one starting at UNLV in June of this year, and I will tell you, probably none of them are going to come home. So these types of programs, these types of centers are critical for us to survive as an island. We, Mokulele Airlines canceled the flights this week of our one podiatrist and the one orthodontist who flies to Ireland once a month to service 30 people.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none. Members, please note that we do have comments provided by the Department of Budget and Finance, support from Farmer Care Hawaii, and as well as for individuals. So with that, members, we'll open up for questions. We have someone from Molokai, no? Okay, I have a few questions for the dean.
Yes.
Okay, there you are. How many pharmacists are currently in Hawaii?
There are a little over 2,000 pharmacists who are registered in Hawaii. Not necessarily all of them are practicing here, but they have licenses to be able to practice here.
Okay, thank you. I'm very familiar with the Hawaii State Center for Nursing and their model, which I know this is based off of. Are you confident there's enough critical mass of pharmacists to make this a self-sustaining fund?
Yes. It, it, so we worked with the Board of Pharmacy and pulled some numbers, and this is primarily Corey Sanders at Hawaii Pharmacists Association who did this. And we looked at the numbers of pharmacists, pharmacies, permit holders, wholesalers, all of who would be paying into this workforce assessment fee, and the numbers and then, and ran some numbers on proposed fee structures, and confirmed that the, the dollars would add up to be consistent with what would be the salary and fringe for a director along with some base supplies. And the intent is that this would be a way to get the center started, and then, once the director is in place, then there would be additional efforts to leverage additional sources of funding to do, you know, more things as needed. But at least in terms of getting the center started, that this was a profession-driven way of being able to move forward. So I want to say that this is a little bit different in terms of the budget structure of the proposed pharmacy, the Center for Pharmacy, whereas the ones for medicine and nursing have depended on some legislative allocations to form the base structure. But because of the nature and challenges of healthcare that we have in Hawaii right now, that we feel that it's important for us to get going and get, getting started working with our other health profession colleagues, and then build from there.
Okay, thank you. What is your vision for the center upon like full build-out? I know the Hawaii State Center for Nursing has, I think, seven employees now, maybe nine. What do you envision as kind of the end goal?
So the end goal, I, you know, I think it's not about, at this point, it's a little premature to talk about numbers and things, but I think one of the first things that we need to do is get a better handle on workforce assessments or question, how many pharmacists are here? We don't really have a good answer to that. We know how many pharmacists are licensed to practice. We don't know necessarily how many pharmacists are currently practicing, would like to practice, where, we, we also know that although in the past, we've heard, you know, I, I just moved back, I was born and raised in Hawaii, I just moved back about a year ago. When I first came, moved back about a year ago, I heard that there were too many pharmacists in Hawaii, but in actuality, that was not the case. And we're, we're getting feedback that a number of pharmacy employers are having a hard time filling all of their positions. We know as a nation, we're getting ready for a pharmacist shortage. We don't have one right now, but we are gearing up for it because there's going to be more retirements coming up than students coming out of pharmacy school. And that's a concern in Hawaii when we already have shortages of physicians, shortages of nursing, nurses, and what we would like to do in the urgency in terms of getting this center started is to be able to get that director so we can be proactive about making sure that we're strategically meeting the pharmacy workforce needs in Hawaii before it becomes an insurmountable problem. So that's just the basic first step. From there, there are a lot of opportunities, I think, in Hawaii to lead the nation in terms of better leveraging pharmacists and the doctoral level of training of pharmacists that we have, to be able to fill some access-to-care gaps, working in collaboration with our colleagues in nursing and as physicians and in specialty areas in rural and underserved areas of the state. And so that is, you know, in a, in a broad, general way, that is the end goal, and to be able to do that and get that, the citizens of the state, the access to care, in a very strategic, team-based way, it takes a lot of coordination, and the intent is that this initial director of the center will start with the coordination, working with the different stakeholders, setting the priorities, and then building out the additional programs that are needed to move each of those initiatives forwards.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 940, relating to the University of Hawaii at Hilo. This bill appropriates funds for the rat lung worm lab at the University of Hawaii at Hilo. Up first, welcome the dean back again, testifying in support.
Yes, so we, we stand in our written testimony, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, please note, we also have testimony in support from the Department of Health, Disease Outbreak Control Division, as well as an individual. Is there anyone in the room wishing to testify? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Okay, we'll continue on to the next bill, House Bill 546. This is relating to artificial intelligence, establishes and appropriates funds to establish the Aloha Intelligence Institute within the University of Hawaii to develop, support, and advance artificial intelligence initiatives statewide. Up first, we have the University of Hawaii Vice President Basile Sirmos testifying in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. First of all, let me thank you for, God, the days are going fast, yesterday or the day before yesterday for having a meeting on AI and both from K-12 and the university. Thank you for inviting us. So we're standing in support of the creation of the institute. I can give you a little bit of a highlight how we are thinking of initiating the institute and seed funding it. We have a three-pronged approach. We are asking the state to be a partner in that funding opportunity, if you will, but we have really strong funding from the federal government. Now, we don't know if the federal government will be functioning, but we do have very strong funding from the federal government, and also, we're looking at philanthropy, so we have that three-pronged approach. We are not wed to the state funding the whole institute, but we would love for you to be an investor, if you will, for something really good for the university and for the state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have the University of Hawaii Professional Assembly. Not seeing them in the room. They have provided testimony and support. Up next on Zoom, Shelby Pikachu Billioner.
Not present.
Not present, shucks. Providing comments. Members, please also note, we have testimony in opposition from two individuals. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none. Members, questions? House Bill 546. I have a few questions for VP Sirmos. So I know right now, the bill has this housed within your area.
Yes.
Do you see this as a temporary home, like within the research area? Or do you see this eventually like branching out to become like maybe its own standalone department?
Actually, we think of becoming a standalone entity under UH system encompasses all our 10 campuses, but we're looking to incubate under my area right now, because a big part of the investment is going to come out of our research portfolio.
Okay, and then, do you envision a day where UH might be issuing its, its own degrees in the field of AI?
Absolutely. I think UH Manoa, right now, they just approved an AI degree, so hopefully, the rest of the campuses will follow.
Okay, thank you. Members, questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Carry on to the next bill, House Bill 549. This is relating to an early learning apprenticeship grant program. This bill establishes an early learning apprenticeship grant program to be administered by UH to provide financial support for early learning program service providers in the state. To participate in state or federally-approved early learning apprenticeship programs requires an annual report to the legislature and appropriates funds. Up first, we have Dean Marata with the University of Hawaii College of Education.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of committee. Nathan Marata, Dean, College of Education, UH Manoa. I stand in support of my testimony, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Up next, we have the Executive Office on Early Learning. Yoko Arakawa-Cross testifying in support.
Hi, Chair Garrett, Vice Chair Amato, and members of the committee. I'm Yoko Arakawa-Cross, Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. We stand on our written testimony and support, and we defer to the University of Hawaii on implementation. Early learning registered apprenticeship programs provide aspiring early childhood professionals with structured, hands-on experience, employer-paid classroom learning, and comprehensive support to advance their careers. EOL welcomes the opportunity to collaborate with the university on the grant award criteria and appreciate the legislature's continued investment in our Keke, our families, and our workforce. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, sitting in Kani of Honolulu, Department of Community Services, Director Krucki Orr Duzigni, testifying in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Jordina Ferrar, on behalf of Director Krucki with DCS, we stand on our written testimony and strong support of the bill. Happy to answer any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Up next, University of Hawaii, Manoa College of Education, Terry Locke, testifying in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I, I, I'm here to stand in support of this particular bill and also here to answer any questions. But in my testimony, I wrote a short little paragraph about an apprentice that I was able to interview before, before today. So I just want to read that. First of all, as the Director of the Early Childhood Education Educator Excellence and Equity Project at the University of Hawaii College of Education, I supported through our funding, we were able to support Honolulu Community College and Keke Okaaina Family Learning Centers in launching our first state, our state's first early childhood education registered apprenticeship program through COCA in the summer of 2023. Recently, I spoke to one of COCA's apprentices. She is employed as an aide at COCA's Kapua Preschool located in Maili, Oahu. With strong support from her husband and her four boys, and all those ages, 14, 11, 10, and 5, she enrolled in her first ECE course at Honolulu Community College in 2023, in the academic year 2023-24, and she shared with me, "To be in a job where going to, where I'm going to school has made, made a huge difference. This apprenticeship program fits the type of learner that I am. I love that I get to apply what I learned from my mentor and my college instructors while interacting with preschool children." She also credits her very encouraging instructors at HONCC. She is on target to complete her first of three milestones, a Child Development Associate, a nationally-recognized credential in May 2025. Her goal is to be a preschool lead teacher or open her own family childcare home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Early Childhood Action Strategy, Vivian Eto, testifying in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Vivian Eto with Early Childhood Action Strategy, here in strong support of this measure. We'll stand on our written testimony, and I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks, Chevelle Davis, testifying in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Mahalo for hearing this measure. We stand on our written testimony and strong support. Mahalo.
Thank you. Up next, the Department of the Attorney General. Up next, the Department of the Attorney General.
Not present.
Not present. Uh, members note that they, uh, provided comments. Um, that's all that we have. Oh, nope, I stand corrected. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna butcher this name, but, uh, Philamar Felicitas?
Not present.
Not present, thank you, testifying in support. Kristen Zuli?
Also not present.
Thank you. Um, that's all we have registered to testify. Is there anyone in the room wishing to do so? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none. Members, questions? House Bill 549. Okay, members, just please note that we do have several dozen testimony and support from various individuals throughout the state. Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on to our second-to-last bill, House Bill 1172, relating to departmental data sharing. This bill adds a Department of Taxation to the list of state agencies, sharing data through the statewide longitudinal data system, allows the Department of Taxation to provide the University of Hawaii and other state agencies certain wage data. Up first, we have the, um, Department of Taxation, testifying in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Winston Wong, on behalf of the Department of Taxation and Director Gary Sugunuma. The department has provided written comments in just, in support of this bill. Uh, we stand on those comments and I'll be available for, um, questions thereafter. I just do want to reiterate that the only concerns that we did have with this bill were the protection of confidential taxpayer information, and this bill appears to have done that with its current language. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, up next, University of Hawaii System, VP Halbert, testifying in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Vice President Hal, Deborah Halbert. Uh, we stand in support of the bill and stand on our written testimony. As was just alluded to, we acknowledge that the data that we'd be sharing is not personal information, but is aggregated and, 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 I can't say that word. Anyway, and it also speaks to the bill that we'll be speaking to next about how we can report on postgraduate outcomes, so we're very supportive. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, next, Hawaii P20 Partnerships for Education, Stephen Schatz, testifying in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Stephen Schatz from Hawaii P20 Partnerships for Education. I stand on our written testimony in support of this bill.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, via Zoom, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, providing comments.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Nick Millen, on behalf of Tammy Machika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We've submitted comments on the measure. Uh, we have no objections, um, as long as individual taxpayer privacy is respected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, members, that's all that we have, uh, signed up to testify. Please note that we do have testimony in opposition from one individual. Is there anyone in the room wishing to testify? House Bill 1172. Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none. Members, questions? Okay, moving on to our last bill of the day, uh, House Bill 1320 relating to education. This bill requires the University of Hawaii System to collect, analyze, and publicly, publicly report certain graduate outcome data, requires and appropriates monies for the development and maintenance of a graduate outcomes dashboard, appropriate monies for 2.0 FTE positions within the University of Hawaii's Office of the Vice President of Academic Strategy, and requires annual reports to the legislature. Okay, our only testifier in this, uh, bill is the University of Hawaii System, um, VP Halbert, testifying in support with comments.
Good afternoon again, uh, Deborah Halbert, Vice President for Academic Strategy. We stand on our written testimony in support and happy to answer questions on this. You have our testimony, and so I'm sure that we can have a conversation if you have other questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone in the room wishing to testify on House Bill 1320? Seeing none. Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none as well. Members, questions? I have one question for VP Halbert, if you don't mind coming back up.
Of course.
Um, could you operationalize House Bill 1320 without House Bill 1172 that we just heard?
We, the, the, yes, we can, um, but as noted, some of the data that is available through the Department of Taxation in aggregate form would be useful in getting better data for what we're doing here, if that makes sense. So as noted in the testimony on the prior bill, there are some elements of employment in the state that are difficult to access without access to the Department of Taxation data.
Okay, thanks for confirming that. Members, any other questions? If not, well, that was a 30-minute hearing. Uh, we will recess for decision-making and give, um, fellow higher ed members who are watching via YouTube a few minutes to come down to, uh, participate in the, uh, decision-making. Recession. Recession.